All right, thank you all. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag to the republic Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mrs. Scovano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
David, are you on? Okay.
I don't, I don't see him. Mr. Segal? Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Yeah.
With, oops, just a minute.
Is he back on?
I'm checking. I don't see him. With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Connor, I want to thank you again for hosting our meeting tonight and making sure everything's working like it's supposed to. We had set aside time tonight to have a public hearing for the fund balance transfer, but we have no individuals who have asked to speak. So we'll move on then to our petitions and communications portion, and we have no one from the public who has asked to speak tonight. So we'll skip that portion. And I will move right to Board member comments. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Ken? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention an article that was in the Sunday Register Star. It was in the business section, which, you know, not everybody might have got. But it's in the business section, but it relates to us. And the title of the article is "Virus Exposes Sharp Economic Divide: College Versus Non-Collage." And I just pulled out a few quotes. So right now, with what's going on in the country right now, for workers with a high school diploma, with only a high school diploma, the jobless rate is 15.3%. For college graduates, it's just 7.4%. So it's the unemployment rate for college graduates is half the rate for people who don't have a college degree. Fewer than, fewer than half of high school graduates are not working. Two-thirds of college graduates are. This is a statistic that sort of jumped out at me. About 90% of the jobs that were added during the three years leading up to this went to college graduates. 90% of new jobs created in this country went to people who are college graduates. And there's a quote in here from somebody. "Workers with the least education are typically the first to be let go and frequently the last to be rehired." You know, this is my second recession since getting on the school board. And first time, the Great Recession, I was looking at exactly the same sorts of statistics being published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And I just want to say, we have these debates about college and career-ready. The reality is, the economy that's being created in this country right now is creating a divide. The divide is getting greater, and it really is favoring people who have college degrees. And so I really think, I'm going to say this quite clearly. I've said it privately a lot of times. I may have said it on the floor before. I'm going to say it again. If we want to solve the cycle of poverty in this country and this community, we have to figure out how to, a way to get kids to college. From my generation, that was typical. I mean, neither of my parents had college degrees. They expected me to go to college. They expected my sister to go to college. What we're seeing now, there was an article in The Economist a few years ago about this in the United States. If your parents didn't go to college, you are very unlikely to go to college. The, and there's various reasons for that. One of which is, it's a cultural issue, that the attitude that people like my parents had, that the way to get ahead in this country is to get an education. And so if you want your kids to have a better life, they need to get to college. That doesn't seem to be a prevalent attitude anymore. But we also know that we've got problems, issues with the level of readiness of the kids that come to us. I, I'm not saying, I understand there's no magic wand. What I'm saying is, I do think our focus really needs to be in this school district across the country, but particularly in this school district and this community. We have got to start getting people focused on getting ready to go to college and getting them to college. This economy, it's not going to change. We're not suddenly going to have a whole bunch of the jobs that we had in the 1960s where you could make a middle-class living not going to college. Those jobs are gone, they're not coming back. So if we really want to improve this community, the people who are in charge of this school district, we have got to figure out how to get our kids college-ready and then to college.
Other Board, other Board member comments?
So I'm going to piggy, can I?
Go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to piggyback on to what Tim started and talk about, refer back to our conversation about Tier Two last time and additions to what we might want to see addressed. I noticed that only Tim and Ken's name were attached to the addition of the academy, you know, a deeper dive into the academy's success. I'd like to add my name to it, please. And I think, you know, we're nine years in, and one of the things we were supposed to see was this great increase in, in our, in our graduation rates and, you know, college and career readiness, but also, you know, ready for vocational. I, I'd like to see how successful we, nine years is long enough to see if we had success. And if we haven't, do we need to look at it from a different direction? So I'm not sure where other Board members are on that one. I'm not sure where administration is on that one because it was just an addition in the bottom and obviously then didn't get up to. I don't think it's a Tier Three item either. I think it needs to rise, and we need to really take a look at how well those are working because sometimes we just go along to get along. The community likes it, it sounds good. Everybody has some sort of certification. You know, interestingly enough, how many of those certifications are eligible for employment, you know, make our students eligible for employment? And what good is it if they haven't graduated? And so let's take a look at our graduation rate and, and, you know, let's just aggregate those scores and see, you know, how we're doing. And I'm with you, Tim. I came from a family, my parents didn't go to college either. You know, big family, we were poor. But somehow, it didn't matter what else. That was the one goal my parents had for us. So you're right, but the paradigm seems to have shifted. And how do we get that to, to shift back?
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
Well, we've had this discussion, you're right, many times. And one of the things I'll say is, I mean, I'm a part of the economy that has been greatly affected by education and college. But one of the things I'll say is, I guess I don't dispute the stats that Mr. Rollins is saying, but I think, I think it's a mistake to call it college as such because what I hear consistently is it's advanced learning and advanced training. And so what I'll say is that I've read a whole lot of articles about a lot of students who are questioning the amount of money they've spent on a four-year degree and the fact that, you know, they're at Starbucks or whatever. So I'm not saying that the economy hasn't shifted. I'm not at all disputing a lot of it is more technical. But I think the, the point that I'd like, and so I would like to see this to be a larger discussion on the fact-fighting side. But there does seem to be, in the articles I'm reading, a lot of discussions. First of all, I'll say on the conceptual level that a lot of folks are looking at college now as vocational training and that the kinds of majors that seem to be the ones that people are most doing, that do follow the economic trail, they're not liberal arts majors by and large. And so I think that, you know, just to say blanket it's college. First of all, let me strongly disagree on the certification if somebody graduates, and that's a big if. One of the reasons for those certifications, it is employers. This is not some abstract educational concept. It is the certifications that are being asked for by employers. And I think the employers I talked to want to make sure that the students we turn out are literate, that they can follow numeracy standards, have the soft skills, all those kinds of things. So I think a lot of the issues that we're talking about are kids who are not graduating from high school. And I think that's its own issue. But one of the things I'll say is, yet again, if you look at, you know, a whole category of what seems to be jobs that are doing okay, which would be the trades, other related kinds of things, there are jobs out there for people with advanced training, not necessarily a four-year degree. So if we are defining college as a four-year degree only, then I think that's where we really have to talk about it. And let me say this, there's a lot of four-year degrees that there seems to be a glut. And I hate to pick on it, but we do have a glut of lawyers. We have a glut of a lot of people in a lot of areas. So having a four-year degree or a seven-year degree is no guarantee. So I think the thing that we need to do, from my point of view, is focus on the things that we're hearing from employers, which are on the skills of reading and comprehension, of numeracy, of the soft skills that people need to be successful in the marketplace, and then imbue them with advanced training. So that would be my counter to this, is that there are a great many things which college degrees open up. But I think we, I'd like this to be concerted. And what I'd like to recommend is that if we're really interested in this topic, that it would be worthwhile for both the administration's time and ours than to have, I hate to do this, but, you know, some kind of task force that really does sit down on this.
Okay. Other Board member comments?
Ken, I don't know if we get to do a, a point of clarification, but I would like to.
No, go right ahead, Jude.
Okay. Mike, we always consider a two-year degree as college. I mean, when kids are going off, are graduating and they're writing in their book where they're going and they're talking about going to college, it isn't always to a four-year university. A two-year program at Rock Valley is college, and there are a lot of certifications that can be found there. And my point about the certification was just this, and I don't know the answer is, if we're, if, if we're, students are getting these certifications, but they don't graduate, are the employers still interested in them because they're missing, obviously, some of the numeracy and literacy and other pieces that didn't allow them to, to graduate? So those were what I was saying.
College is one thing, but not graduating, graduating from high school is something different. And so that's why I said advanced learning, because there are kids that go to Rock Valley that don't get a two-year degree. So all I'm doing is saying, if we're going to call it college, let's define what we're talking about. Because I think that, I think that, you know, I'd like to see a lot more rigor to the study of some of these outcomes and, and to disaggregate not graduating, graduating from high school with some of the other trends.
Okay. Any other Board member comments?
Could I just, could I just? So I'm just using the terminology that's in the article, which refers to high school-only degrees and college degrees, college graduates. When I've looked at Bureau of Labor Statistics information, they're talking about college graduates. And, you know, we all have our, the people we talk to. I can remember being at one event, I think at one of the kickoffs of the career academies, where we talked about people being college and career-ready, but that we were focusing on college and having a couple of different people come up to me. One was a client who's a local manufacturer telling me, you know, there's no real manufacturing being done in the U.S. anymore. It's assembly. And they only hire college graduates for assembly jobs. They're not hiring anybody who doesn't, not a college graduate. And I had one of the local union leaders come up to me and say, "They prefer college graduates for their journeyman programs now." So we can talk about these things, and we should talk about these things. And we should, we should have a more robust discussion about them. But that is the direction that this is going.
Okay, thank you all. We'll move on now to consent items, including the following. The meeting minutes of May 26, 2020. Payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders fiscal year '20, purchase orders fiscal year '21. Recurring contracts of Forecast Five Analytics. Renewal, the consolidated contracts for special ed. The consolidated contracts for therapeutic day. The other consent items, including the memorandum of understanding for the 2021 contract extension and bonus with the Rockford Education Association. The recurring approval of the consolidated district plan. The recurring annual plans for school improvement under 1003A. The Illinois Association of School Board Annual Dues. The Workers' Compensation Settlement Agreement for DN. And the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved. This is moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second. This is David.
By Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that Board members wish got pulled for separate consideration?
Ken?
Go ahead, David.
Well, seven D, it's purchase orders.
Seven D?
It'll be.
Seven D, N, E, or just seven D?
Actually, just, just seven E. I'm sorry.
E, okay, all right. Jude?
I'm looking for the number if you want it, but why don't you pull the one about the school district or the association fees?
Nine D.
Okay, I'm down to 12. That's why I'm not finding it. Nine D.
Nine D.
Thank you.
All right, any others? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 7E, which is the purchase orders for fiscal year '21.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Comments and discussion?
I almost hate to bring this up, but on page one for the purchase orders for next year is Aramark Custodial Services. And what caught my eye was the line item perfectly matched what we accepted back in 2017 when we went from GCA to Aramark, the $7,494,567. But then right below it, there's overtime services, $150,000. And I couldn't find any documentation showing that we were going to approve overtime. And it just kind of dawned on me, was this something that was part of the contract that we were going to bake in a certain amount of overtime each year? And I guess the only reason I ask is suddenly now we're kind of concerned about, about dollars. And $150,000 is meaningful now.
This is as a result of different rentals, facility rentals and other special kind of projects that we have to assign folks to. Mr. Phillips is on, and he can explain more to.
Thank you.
Sorry, helping, by the way.
Okay.
Thanks, Luke.
David, this is Mike Phillips. Yeah, this is to take care of items that are just kind of out of the box, whether it's opening up on weekends for schools that have certain things going on. It could be extracurricular activities that are not accounted for in the regular contract. That could be, like you said, rentals, athletic events, wrestling, and weekend events that happen.
So I guess my question is, were we aware that there would be this much anticipated overtime when we made the decision to go to Aramark? And was there a similar, for lack of a better word, contingency suggested to us by GCA?
My understanding is the, the overtime component has been incorporated, whether it's been GCA or Aramark, to take care of items outside of normal cleaning activities.
Okay. I just, unfortunately, it was a lot of line items to go back to previous years' purchase orders to try and find if this is something that we had done in the past. And so I didn't get it done, I was hoping that you knew. And it sounds like, yes, this is something we typically anticipate each year.
Correct. That doesn't mean we use the entire $150,000 each year, though. I believe we're under $100,000 this year as we approach the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, this is Jude. I certainly would, I would hope that we're under it since we don't have a lot of events going on since February, or I'm sorry, since March. But along the same line, I think that since David raised the issue, and thank you, David, for being so astute in looking through the records, it would be easy enough for Michelle or somebody to get back to us and tell us how much we, you know, paid over contract in previous years. Now, the, the other part that is a lot more work, or shouldn't be, but it probably would be, is how much of that did we take in? How much of that was beyond the regular school where we were doing rentals? Because then part of the rental is custodial fees, correct? So how much of that is actually covered? I mean, the $150,000, are we getting that all back?
Good question.
Jude, if it's an outside rental, it's, those costs are being covered. If it's serving athletic, athletic events, music events, internal events, that, that is part of the overtime budget. But an external rental would be charged to whoever's renting the facility.
Well, then I'd say when you write the contract, the next time, you kind of have an idea what your rental or what the overtime is going to be because of athletic events and, and arts events and those kind of things. And that should be written in the contract. It shouldn't always be an overtime piece. There should be an amount written in there because there's got, there must be a trend, and we must be able to see that. So instead of it just being a separate area. And at least I'd like to see that next time we put one out for bid.
We'll definitely do that.
All right. Any other comments? None, I'll have the coordinator, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 7E.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 9D, which is the IASB Annual Dues.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second. This is David.
Second by Mr. Segal, okay. Comments or questions?
Well, this is Jude, and I'm the one who asked to have it pulled. And in part, it was just because we've had so many conversations. I realized that how much we're paying is less now. Seems like the bulk of what we get out of it is a lot of the legal, the press, and whatever else we get on policies that we need to change. So I doubt that. But do, what else are people getting out of it? I guess if they'd had that conference, that was a national one, though, not the state one, right? So nobody was going to that. I, I just, I just want to make sure everybody knows, and it's $24,000, which is better than the $38 we used to pay.
Yeah.
And thank, thank you to Aaron and to Ken for following through with that. But I, you know, as long as we all, and legal thinks was the primary promoter last time, and you're still feeling like that's really important, is that true, Ms. Oldley?
I do think it's a valuable service I am here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? If none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 9D, the IASB Annual Dues.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to the closed session consent items, including the following. The appointment of Casey Lecky as a 10-month assistant principal at West Middle School. The appointment of Amber Lee Black as a 10-month dean at Jefferson High School. The appointment of Laura Greer as a 10-month dean at Riverdale Elementary School. The HR organizational report and addenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Second by Mr. Segal. Any comments or questions? Or anything that they'd like to have pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the closed session consent items.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We'll move on then to our next agenda item, the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Scovano. I do want to follow up on our discussion from the committee, the whole meeting. I received the note from Mrs. McCulloch, and it's clear that there's strong consensus also from Mr. Connor's comments tonight as well and Mr. Rollins's comments that there's a need to come up with a way to have a much more robust conversation about the high school academy model. I started immediately corresponding with Mrs. French, and, and we will be reviewing that and talking about how that can properly fit. Integrated literacy was another topic that was raised as a potential Tier Two. That has huge scope, and we would need to narrow that down a bit. So we'll have to have some further conversation about how to handle integrated literacy. But it's clear that there was also strong support from the Board to, to make sure that that is a priority. There were two that were more, there were two suggestions to add to the Tier Two list that were more categorical than specific programs. So we took a stab in cabinet and having some conversations about that. One is the program related to hiring minority teachers. One thing that, we will get back to the Board on that with some ideas about, that was raised by Mr. Segal, about the possibility of organized conversations with affinity groups in our district, including African-American administrators, African-American and non-white teachers, and having some conversations about how we can improve that so that we can potentially review existing strategies and potentially develop new ones. But that doesn't necessarily fit a Tier Two PDSA, but it's something we want to take action on because that's an important metric. but it's something we want to, uh, take action on because that's an important metric for us to, to move. I know it's one of the things the board wants to see improved. And then finally, uh, Mr. Connor mentioned the integration of technology. Uh, there are two potential programs that Mr. Barthel is working with that could potentially serve as added tier-two PDSA's. One is the web safety program, Go Guardian. The other is Class Link, which will be a really strong tier-two analysis as we roll that out potentially. Uh, Class Link allows to really measure usage on all of our programming, and I think it could be a really powerful way to take a look at things like our one-to-one high school rollout that we're considering and some other options. So I think we will get back to the board on details on all four of these areas, but we've had some really good follow-up conversations based on, on the board's feedback. I think we also got, um, some really strong feedback on why you were interested in the particular topics. And I attempted to capture those in, uh, in a document that I sent your way for your feedback. I also attempted to tabulate, and it showed that there was really some strong consensus about what the board saw as priorities. What we'll do with the existing items that are already on the list that, that we've collectively categorized is after we finish our board governance work with Doug Eadie and look at what our committee structure will, will be, uh, I want to work very closely with the board to develop a very robust board report schedule where we can look at the superintendent's report and make sure we cover these tier-two topics and multiple times get, uh, make sure we're talking about tier-three topics. Um, we also will use that to inform what your weekly update looks like, uh, that Mary Call and I work on together every week, make sure that things are covered there. So we think there's going to be some important work that we can do in the months of July. Uh, it's pushed back a little bit because of our COVID situation, but into the month of July, um, I do, I do think there's going to be some great opportunities for conversation in that regard. So, um, that will, uh, continued conversation, uh, in, in that area.
Okay. Dr. Jarrett, I have one, this is Ken. I have one question for you. He had to step away. I, uh, I don't see Matt Vosberg, I don't see Heidi Detman.
Yes, Heidi, Heidi, Heidi had to step away for a little bit tonight, but she'll be here now.
I just wanted to ask the question because, um, for the rest of the board, um, at district leadership yesterday, um, the, we got an update from Heidi on the survey that was done by her team, um, for, uh, parents, families, teachers, students, on how the year-end went and how remote learning went and, and other things. And I, and I thought that the information that she summarized was very helpful to me, and I was wondering if that is going to come to the board in a weekly update?
It is.
Plan for that?
It is scheduled for, uh, it is scheduled for this week's weekly update, Ken. Heidi wanted to do a little bit more work with Mary Call on that, but that will, a more refined version of that will be coming your way on Friday. We also will have some updates around summer school in this week's weekly update as well.
I, I just thought it's a great opportunity for the board to listen to the staff and to listen to the parents, uh, and teachers and, and everybody about, you know, how things went, what concerns they have about coming up with the fall, stuff like that. So, good.
One thing, one thing I would add, Mr. Scravano, is that we were really pleased with a very robust survey response rate. We had over 2,000 students that responded, well, nearly 1,000 parents, uh, 1,300 teachers, and about 600 or 700 other staff members. So a lot of really great data to comb through. Uh, DLT, we got a district leadership team, we got a very preliminary look at that, and, uh, I think we're going to really see that this drives, uh, not only will you see some things in this week's weekly update, but it will really drive our planning as we look at what our, our plan for the fall looks like and how we can better meet the needs of our learners and our families and our faculty and staff as we tackle, you know, unprecedented, uh, planning challenges going into the fall of 2012.
Yeah, very good. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Jarrett? Uh, if not, we will move on to action items, and our first action item tonight is the resolution extending the board policy 4.10, the budget deadline that was presented to us by Ms. Jarrett. Is there a motion in a second to approve item 12A?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Motion by Anthony.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or comments or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the resolution 12A for extending board policy budget deadline.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough? Still muted.
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
The motion passes unanimously.
You know, we need a remote control for those, uh, remotes, uh, for the, uh, for the muting thing. Uh, okay, our next action item is, uh, 12B. That's the donation of the squad car that was presented by Mrs. French. Is there a motion in a second to approve item 12B?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Uh, any questions or comments? Any discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 12B.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is the, uh, 12C, which is the special ed, private and residential placement contract for Hope Learning Academy. Mrs. Lawrence presented this. Is there a motion a second to approve the item 12C?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the coordinator then to call the role on the approval of action item 12C.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next, uh, action item is, uh, action item 12D, which is the contract with employment tracker for employment insurance claims administration and cost management. I think that was Mr. Zetaker that brought that to us. Uh, any, can I have a motion in a second to approve item 12D?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Um, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 12D.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I, our next action item is called E, which is the Community Foundation of Illinois Every Child Every Day Grant Acceptance. Is there a motion in a second to approve item 12E?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or comments or discussion? Uh, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 12E.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next action item is 12F, which is the CisCloud G Suite and Office 365 Cloud Backup that was presented by Mr. Barthel. Is there a motion in a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I think it would be helpful just as a reminder, because this is a, uh, you know, a cost that, um, I think, um, I just want to make sure everybody's, uh, okay with the cost structure. So if Mr. Barthel can just take two minutes to remind us of why this is important.
Certainly. Uh, so the way this is broken down is a cost per user per month, uh, and that is, and that is for the staff of the district to back up our critical, uh, digital learning tools that we're using right now more than we ever have because of the endemic, but ongoing. And again, that's grabbing snapshots of things like Google Classroom or remote learning sites uh, to be able to provide us a quick, uh, and effective restore option, uh, in a matter of minutes as opposed to what may take an hour or two, uh, with a traditional backup scenario. Uh, so that allows for more class time, uh, and more, more opportunities, more time, uh, in the classroom and learning and, and, uh, really mitigating that downtime.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? It's none. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 12.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is 12G, which is the BMO Harris, uh, lease termination agreement and ATM placement agreement that Mr. Phillips and Mrs. Houghton presented. Is there a motion in a second to present, to approve this item? Moved by Mr. Connor? There a second?
Second.
Second by?
Second, Jude.
Or Miss, yeah, Mrs. McCullough. Any comments or questions or discussion? I just wanted to make a note that Mr. Phillips did send a note out to the board today on a question, uh, to the, the, the ATM across, or the drive-up bank. They're gonna, that's going to be closed, so he did respond to that, to the board. All right. If, uh, no other questions, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 12G.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next, uh, action item is, uh, 12A, which is the 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct uh, that was presented by Mrs. Hyde Carter. Um, is there a motion in a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
This is Mr. Segal. Uh, any questions, comments, or discussion on the student code of conduct? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 12H.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We're, uh, we are now on to new business, and administration is seeking suspension of the rules for this request to ensure hotspots are received in enough time to distribute for summer programming beginning June 29th, 22nd. Summer registration required responses regarding the need for internal internet services to be identified by June 3rd. The data indicates 98 students enrolled in summer program do not have internet access. So I'll take a motion and a second to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions, comment?
I wonder if we should find?
What was that, Mr. Rollins?
I wonder if we should find a different term than hotspots. It's got a different character.
Uh, okay. Uh, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Barthel, are you going to make a presentation on this?
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano, we need a motion in a second to approve.
Let's take a motion in a second to approve the T-Mobile and Power ED 2.0 Wi-Fi hotspot program.
So moved.
Was that a yes? Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
Second, Jude.
Second by Jude. Okay, very good. Now let's have the presentation and we can ask him questions. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you. So, uh, I'm bringing this, the T-Mobile and Power Ed Wi-Fi hotspot program forward. Uh, and this is a program, this is something we've been analyzing as another support tier to address our, address our digital divide. As you recall, we brought, uh, forward the Comcast, uh, Internet Essential sponsorship, uh, a couple of board meetings ago, but this is a program really, uh, focused, uh, towards our most, our families that are most in need. Uh, those like our homeless families or sheltered families, those that may be living in friends' homes or somebody that may have a high mobility rate that's moving from place to place. Where installing a Comcast service in a home is just not a viable or feasible option for them. Um, again, we were going to actually bring this forward in July for the fall as we really look at that, uh, tier-two, uh, tech plan, uh, and looking at some of those, uh, uh, Class Link and Go Guardian pieces as well, but because of the, the need, uh, that we saw that was pretty surprising from our summer program and the indication, that's why we brought it forward ahead of time. Uh, what we decided to do is to use really that summer program with those 100 hotspots as our pilot program. Um, those, the first couple of months, uh, will be, uh, the July and August timeframe will be funded out of title for this. Uh, and then the remaining contract will be picked up, uh, out of the IT budget. Uh, and essentially the type of data that we're going to pull from that pilot program, um, to potentially, uh, expand this in the fall are things such as coverage, the connectivity, the usage, uh, as far as what sites are visited, uh, compliance as well, making sure that, uh, uh, we're maintaining CIPA compliance, Children's Internet Protection Act, um, to really see if we're getting a good value and use out of these devices. Uh, if you had the opportunity to take a look at the different options we had available to us, uh, both in, both Sprint and T-Mobile had a grant-funded opportunity, uh, 1 million project and 10 million project. Uh, so we looked at a bunch of different options. However, we have a major, uh, some, some limitations there with bandwidth, uh, where you're, you're limited as a student or a family to six to 10 gig a month. Uh, and if we're really going full tilt with, uh, uh, a, a remote learning or one-to-one take-home, uh, take-home initiative in the high schools next year, that's not nearly enough data to do what you have to do. As an example, if I stream a two-hour movie, that's four gig of data. Um, so the students would start off good, and then a couple of weeks into, uh, to, uh, to that, uh, uh, either using those programs, they would not, they wouldn't have any data for the month. So that's why we really landed on the T-Mobile and Power Ed program. Um, CPS is actually one of the largest, uh, districts that are actually, that are using this program right now, and it's been a really good option for them. Um, and I just wanted, one last thing is to point, to go back on Mr. Rollins' point of getting kids ready for, to go to college, and, uh, you know, equitable access is really a critical component to that. Um, uh, learning for seven hours in a class day, uh, it shouldn't stop there just because they don't have internet access at home. So this is really, again, another tier to, to reach out to our families and providing that equitable access across the district.
Questions or comments for Mr. Barthel?
Um, this is Tim. I'm curious, the federal money that we're, we're getting, um, through the CARES Act, is this the sort of thing that can be used, that that can be used for?
Yes, that's correct. This is Michelle.
Okay, do we, do we plan to use it for that, then?
Um, this is going to be covered under a title. We've spent a lot of the CARES Act money. So what I'm doing, there's, uh, also FEMA money, so I'm gathering all those costs in one cost location so that way I can best, um, apply those, because there's different requirements for each one, and so we can just sift through those and figure out the best way to get, um, the money. But if they're eligible under, like, title in this case, um, we're going to go ahead and utilize those funds if we have those available first.
Did, did you say we spent that money already? Didn't we get like 11 million or something like that?
Well, part of it will go to the non-public, so we have bought a bunch of computers for kids and, um, to get ready for the fall. So, um, we're still, we're still analyzing all of that, but I'm just, I'm gathering everything with FEMA money and with CARES Act money, so, uh, we won't get the whole 11 million. Uh, Dr. Travis. we won't get the whole 11 million. Dr. Travis Wolf was working on that to figure out exactly how much we have, but we're reserving the two or three million out of that.
Okay.
Mr. Rollins, there's also significant discussion right now regarding potential E-Rate Category 1 covering cost for student internet internet access at home in the future. It's not there yet, but there's a lot of discussion going on about that right now, too. And we are 85% reimbursed at that on that.
So this is Ken. Jason, I have a logistics question. So if we put 100 hotspots out there, you know, where will they be? Do people have to go somewhere to get connected? Or, you know, will it just be in a wide enough connection that it's in a neighborhood or something like that or whatever? How does that work?
Yeah. So they'll be and we did a significant coverage analysis with this. So they'll be able to sit in their home and connect to the cellular Wi-Fi off of that device. And just for those who don't know, T-Mobile actually just recently merged with Sprint in the last, just very, very recently. So the network has actually expanded significantly as well. So we have got a very, very good coverage across the Rockford area with with this device.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If down on coordinator, I have one more question. That's for Mr. Dotson. If this gets approved tonight, do you have plans to communicate this to the public about what what a good thing this is is gonna be to help our students that don't have internet access?
Absolutely. Mr. Rollins, we've been working closely with Mr. Barthel and we've already sent out communications already prior to letting families know that this is available.
Okay. All right.
So Ken, I think your question, your question was more than letting people know it was available. At least my my thought would be that the community knows that we're doing this to make sure to reach out is what I heard you say, Ken.
To the media, to the media in particular.
Yeah, that we really want people to know that we're doing everything we can for students. So yeah, I'm just trying to.
Yes, we've been working closely with representatives from Comcast. We've been doing joint messaging. So absolutely, we've been letting the community know that we're partnering to make sure that. And Comcast has a news release that's ready to go that they're gonna be releasing here shortly. So absolutely, we've been.
But you but you know what students are going to be participating and who doesn't have access. So you'll be one-to-one with them. Because that's different to, you know, communicate directly with the student versus a community release. So both pieces are there, I'm sure.
Okay, very good. I'll have coordinator then call the role on the approval of the T-Mobile and Power ED 2.0 Wi-Fi hotspot program.
Ms. Stanford? I'm sorry, could you repeat, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, our next new business item is the MOU with Awaken Foundation to provide apprenticeships. I have Mrs. French down for this. Is she presenting or someone else?
I'm here. I'm presenting.
Okay, there you are. I see you now. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Bridgette French, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, presenting an MOU with Awaken Foundation, which is an L3C organization created by a woman named Jeria Crudeup, who is focused on providing students apprenticeships in culinary arts and building, repair, and maintenance, ranging from 1,000, 2,000 to 4,000 hours after school and over the summer. She specifically targets students or it's really 15 to 25, but will be targeting students who have had challenges in their lives, extreme poverty, homelessness. She really likes to target students that have been in and out of the juvenile justice program to try to give those kids a second chance. There's no cost to the district. Essentially, our high school counselors and academy coaches will be working to connect those students to apply for these apprenticeships. Should the number of apprentices grow larger than their capacity, but at this time, they're really looking for any students who are interested. They do require a 12-week life skills course prior to the placement in the apprenticeship, which allows them to determine whether or not the student is ready to move on to the apprenticeship level. So that's where those hours come in. And then once the intern or the apprenticeship is complete, some students are able to continue on in the culinary arts area with the College of DuPage to get some college credit and continue on in their educational journey that way. So I am happy to take any questions at this time.
All right, questions for Bridgette?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, this sounds like a good program. I mean, who's worked with this organization before and who will do the oversight of it?
So I will manage the partnership with the organization. The the woman who created the organization was referred to me by Mr. Scavano. So, you know, I I was, I am trusting in his judgment that she will be a good partner to the district. And I believe after many conversations and meetings with her that that is true, and she has the best interest of our students in mind.
This is, this is Ken. I will just comment that Jeria is a former coworker of mine at the hospital. African-American woman who is very interested in supporting minorities in the community and trying to connect them with careers. So I can, I can highly recommend her as a, as a really good person. So.
I will also welcome her character. This is Earl. Her father's son, he could have been a legend.
Okay.
So this is Jude and and I know that you talked about College of DuPage, which you forgot to mention that they're gonna have a satellite in Rockford, right? Because the sound of that is that somebody, how could they attend a
Correct.
classes at COD?
That is correct.
Do you know when that opens?
I do not. And I did contact her this week to find out when that might be, and I did not hear back from her. But as soon as I do, I I'm happy to let the board know.
Okay, it just seems like a key component, especially if they they want to continue on. The the 12 weeks of life school or I'm sorry, of life skills, those are being, it's just a where are those, where do they take those? Those course, that course?
So she really acts as an intermediary between organizations in the community and the job placement sites. So she has connections with various locations in the community where the classes will be held. That was another question that I I left for her prior to this meeting, trying to wrap up some final details. But she's, though she has not yet identified a location, she did mention again, a partnership with the College of DuPage, once they open their satellite here or potentially the Rockford Public Library.
So I really don't understand the whole 12-week life skills course. Who is? Who offers it? Who teaches it? Is it taught by? I mean, that's not one of our classes, right? So this is outside of
No.
This is outside of an academy and students would be taking that wherever over after school over the summer. So who actually teaches that? Since it's a requirement.
Sure, she has, she has developed this curriculum and she teaches it.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. It's interesting. It's from the College of DuPage was two questions. Was there not a similar program to Rock Valley? And second implied in that is, is there any conflict with the local community college?
Rock Valley does not offer any culinary or hospitality courses, and we did talk to them first as we are obligated to do to ensure that they're, they do not have the programs, nor do they have the capacity to develop programs to align to this culinary apprenticeship.
Okay, any other, any other comments or questions for Bridgette? Go ahead, David.
So what will compel counselors to make the referrals of students? I didn't see anything in here that in the MOU that really drives counselors to make the referrals. And if there isn't anything in there, what exactly is the MOU doing to to make sure that those referrals are going in? And once those referrals do go in and a student enters the program, there's nothing compulsory about it, is there, that really gets them to stay in? At least, nothing from the district, no credential from the from the district?
No, I I mean, this is really just a shared understanding that we are going to put our best foot forward to refer students into this program. These are paid internships. And our counselors do a great job of helping find students the opportunities that they need and want after school, over the summer. So I have no doubt that this will be an opportunity that our counselors share with our students, just as they do when we have companies approach us and say, we have summer job offer, we have summer job openings for 100 students to do X, Y, Z. Have no obligation to pass that information along, but I I can say with certainty that they do because it's in the best interest of their students.
Will the district be promoting Awaken beyond the counselors making referrals to students?
No. No more than we would promote or support any other partner that works with Rockford Public Schools.
Okay.
So Ken, this is Jude. Can I ask follow-up question? Since there's no money involved, how is this instructor being paid? So for example, for the 12-week course and whatever other work she does with the students, is there, does she get grants? Where's the money coming from? Because she, I can't imagine would do this for free, but maybe so. Or this College of DuPage or?
This, no, this is a very much structured, I would say, like alignment Rockford where they write grants or they have community funders to support their work. And then the the part of the grant funding would go to pay the students. And then there would be like an administrative fee that would go to support her work. So this is not, the district is not paying her, the College of DuPage is not paying her. She is solely grant funded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, this will be coming back to us at our June 23rd for board meeting, for a board vote. Thank you, Mrs. French. The next item is Mrs. Yar on the permanent fund transfer.
Good evening. I talked about this during the, when I presented the public hearing for the fund balance transfer. And this is to transfer 32 million from the transportation fund and $5 million from the toward and toward immunity fund to the operations and maintenance fund. So what this does for us going into this recession, it gains flexibility with these funds. Let's say the $32 million was sitting in transportation fund, that is really to be used for transportation. The education fund is our general operating fund, and that gives us flexibility where we need it. Also, the statutory authority for school districts is set to expire at the end of June. So typically, I would move five to eight million dollars at the end of the year. But now we really have kind of one shot at doing this. So that's why I brought this for with a public hearing that was held tonight. And then this is just the agenda item for that fund transfer.
Okay, any questions, questions or comments for Michelle? All right, this will come back to the board for a vote at our next board meeting. The next item is 13D, the tax abatement for S-Wing Manufacturing. Michelle, are you doing that one, too?
Yes, I'll I'll present that as well. So S-Wing is, has done a business improvement. It's between 3.6 million dollars and 4.6 million dollars. They are asking for an abatement for that. That abatement over nine years would be between 170,000 and 213,000 dollars. I've attached a spreadsheet analyzing that just so you can see the difference of that. Also, they would not be able to appeal their tax protests. They won't be able to protest that. And they have agreed to discontinue their appeal that they have right now going on. So they've appealed the 2018 and 2019 tax protest or tax assessment. And so they are going to discontinue looking for that if this is approved. So I think the exact summary has additional information in there, but I'll take any questions on that.
You know, this is Ken. I, this is probably a question for Bridgette. Does S-Wing do anything for the school district with the academies? I mean, they're a manufacturer in town.
Honestly, I don't believe so.
Okay, I didn't think so either. Okay.
So this is Jude. Why would we want to abate them?
I can probably weigh in on that. Mr. Rollins and I were involved as the board representative with conversations with the city, and the city wants a standardized abatement process, essentially in order to incentivize development in the core of our city and have it be consistent. This allows the city of Rockford to be competitive for job creation. So there's very specific criteria. And this meets those 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 criteria. So the idea is that this would be the standard way of doing business consistently in our region in order to incentivize job creation in the center of our city and make sure that investment doesn't go outside of our taxpayers. So I guess I'll I'll add to that. The problem that the city says it's facing, we had some pretty close conversations with the economic development people of the city about this. So they have, they'll have manufacturers who are within the core of the city who come to them and say, we want to expand. And it would be cheaper for us to go build on green space up in Loves Park, Machesney Park to do that. And that that is a real concern. And so we've had these conversations with the city. I, you know, you can flip a coin about this. Are, are, you know, are we, would they really leave? I don't know. But I guess it's probably worth doing something to try to keep them here in the core of the city, in the city of Rockford, where they contribute to our tax base and where they don't abandon a bunch of buildings that are just gonna be sitting there empty and that somebody's going to have to tear down at some point. So what we have pushed them to do, the the business about the fact that they can't contest their assessment, that was from us. We we asked that be added and they they added that. The original assess, the abatement request was not stepped down quickly as what is being stepped down for this one. Nine years is still frankly, a little longer than I'd like to see. But, you know, I'm I'm willing to swallow and go along with it.
Hey, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, this will come back for our June 23rd board meeting.
I have one quick question.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
Is there any implication for the county on this or is it or the township or whatever? Or is it just really the city?
I believe, and Mr. Rollins can correct me, but I believe the city is attempting to partner with as many contiguous taxing districts as possible on this, on this protocol. I know for sure the city and the school district are involved. And that's correct. And so, you know, it's not a multilateral intergovernmental agreement where we've all agreed to do this for every abatement request that comes before. So I can't tell you for sure what the other taxing bodies are doing. I do know that the city was intending to talk to certainly the other two big ones are the are the county and park district. and park district. Once you, once you get the city, the school district, the county and the park district, it's a pretty high percentage of everyone's tax bill. So I think they're, they're at least attempting to get those other two to sign on to the file. I mean, honestly, the county has less incentive because even if they moved to Loves Park, the state county still gets the taxes.
Okay. Thank you. This will come back to us for a vote on our June 23rd, 23rd board meeting. And then our last item tonight is the exclusive final site plan, Earl Dotson Jr. This has a lot to do with language in the website, I understand, correct?
Yes, sir. This is a translation button. Obviously, we think this is an important feature to add on our new website, which is progressing along very nicely. Obviously, with a district as diverse as ours, with many languages spoken, we want to make sure that all of our families have access to our information and can understand it with ease.
Questions or comments for Earl? How many languages will there be available?
This is unlimited languages.
Okay.
We have over 75 spoken in our district, as you can see on the executive summary there.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Dotson? No, this will come back to us on our board meeting on the 23rd of June. So I didn't keep notes on board member action steps, but I kind of think that one was the, you know, the report on the survey for administration to get that to us in the weekly update, which they have plans for that to do. And then Dr. Jarrett's gonna include some of the suggestions we talked about tonight for the Tier 2 ranking, I guess, for high school academy. It was one of the ones that was brought up, so that will be adjusted. Anything else that we needed to follow up on? Okay. Thank you all. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned at 8:14 PM.